Sorry.
Hi stranger.
Thanks. Oh, cool. Thanks. You figure?
Good luck.
Need any help? Let's have you.
Even if he does, he's not asking you.
Yeah, right.
You don't want to know.
Uh, okay, so we are just...
It's looking good.
So, we're good, Matt? Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a...this meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. Dr. Frazier?
Thank- We sure do. Thank you, Mr. Block. It is my pleasure, uh, here this evening to introduce the Council Rock, uh, High School South Band under the direction of Mr. Burns. And first, though, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please welcome David.
Tess?
This microphone is in on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please do remain standing. All right, CR South Band, thank you so much. On behalf of this, uh, school board, the administrative team, uh, our audience here this evening, and everyone watching at home, uh, kudos to all of you. Gave me goosebumps with those two pieces. Thank you so much. What a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful way for us to be able to start our meeting. Uh, Mr. Burns, kudos to you. Great job. Uh, you got much to be proud of here. Good luck to all of you, uh, the rest of this upcoming football season, and then as all your performances start to begin otherwise. Uh, we'll be keeping a close eye on you and can't wait to hear you next. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Just watch the projector on this side.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great job.
And the room clears out. Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Foster?
I'm here.
Mr. Gruff?
Present.
Mr. McKessy?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Present.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Abramson?
Here.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Bylick is a way of officiating a family wedding. Dr. Frazier, superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Block, and good evening, everyone. Uh, the first thing I want to do this evening is thank all of our parents. Uh, because last night, we wrapped up our final, uh, back-to-school nights of this fall, so, uh, they have all now occurred. And I really want to thank our moms and dads, all of our parents, all of our guardians for being so involved, so invested, for taking the time, uh, to come out and meet your child's teachers. That, that bridge, that connection between school and home is so critically important. And, uh, so I already knew that about the Council Rock community, but being able to see that in action and hear all about it, uh, is, is absolutely fantastic. So sincerely, on behalf of the entirety of the Council Rock staff, I want to thank you. Uh, this past Friday was September 11th, and all of our schools, in one way or another, represented, uh, and, and recognized, uh, 9/11. Uh, and, and we're certainly proud of all the various ways that they did so. One particular tribute that I want to specifically point out is, uh, is what happened at South High School. We just saw the CR South Band. Uh, this past Friday at South High School, uh, some of us had the opportunity to participate and attend a ceremony over there where, in a commemoration garden, they actually have a, a piece of a steel beam from one of the World Trade Centers in New York City that is now sitting outside the schoolhouse. So, so if you have a chance to get out there and see it and you haven't seen it yet, I would certainly encourage you to do so. If you're facing the front door, it's right there on the right-hand side. And, um, it was very moving, very touching, and there's lots of people who were involved in this who deserved, uh, to be thanked. I see in the audience here this evening, our education foundation representatives, they actually funded that project. Uh, art teacher Martha Taylor is the one who really spearheaded this at the building level. Uh, and, and on and on from there. Mr. Funk is building principal. Mr. Corey Axler had his students singing and giving some goosebumps last Friday morning as well. So, Mr. Block, I know you had a chance to attend. Mr. Gruff, uh, is a board director, did as well, and Ms. Brooks had a chance to attend. And for all of us, I know, it was an absolutely moving and touching experience. So, so thanks again to the Ed Foundation. Thanks to Mrs. Taylor over there at South, uh, for just the wonderful, wonderful work that you did. And again, if you have a chance to go see that, I cannot encourage you strongly enough to do just that. And, uh, lastly here, at our last board meeting, we talked about Peasars and the next Peasars payment, which is due on September 21st. Uh, since that meeting, we have received directive from Peasars directly in terms of how to handle that. Therefore, we do not have that on the agenda this evening as a specific motion item. Uh, but instead, Mr. Reinhardt, I'm gonna ask you, if you will, to please give the board an update and the public an update, uh, relative to that directive that we received from Peasars.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, yesterday afternoon, or around noon, I received an email with specific numbers on it from Peasars that is telling us and authorizing us to make only the employer's local share. So as, if you remember, last week, we talked about eight million dollars being the full share and four million dollars being the local share, and four million dollars coming from state subsidy that has not been received. Peasars now has sent me an actual, basically, an invoice saying, "Only pay the four million dollars." So, because of that, that was gonna be the recommendation from our solicitor, and you were gonna vote on a resolution. But now I believe I have adequate documentation showing me an invoice saying, "Pay only this." And, uh, I'm not concerned at all about any, uh, interest or anything being charged to us because I have authorization directly from Peasars. I think that's the long and short of it.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. That ends my report. Thank you.
Any questions on, uh, from the board, pretty cut and dry? Okay, excellent. Thank you, Dr. Frazier. We'll move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. I'll be a stickler on that tonight, given the longer agenda. Please consider the fact there may be young children in the audience who are watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It's our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. Uh, I have Michelle Held.
Michelle Held Holland. I'm also Director of the Northampton Bucks County Municipal Authority, and I'm here to talk on two points tonight. The first one is to thank the school board for sending a rep to our meeting last night. And the second is to urge you to delay your vote on the land swap. On my first point, Mr. Taylor, along with Mr. Carr and one other, came into our board meeting last night and gave us a great presentation, even though PowerPoint wasn't gonna cooperate with them, and gave us a lot of information and really the first formal presentation on what's going on. And I thank you for coming in, and I have yet, since last night, to study this, but I will spend lots of time on it this weekend. I really appreciate you coming in. The second is to urge you to delay your vote on the land swap, which is to make up for the ballfields encroaching on the back of the Northampton Senior Center. And this gives the township some more space behind the current municipal authority building. And the reason is because I feel that the Northampton taxpayers, who are also your Council Rock taxpayers, don't have all the information that you have a little bit more of than they do, and in general, they aren't informed as to what is going on and what it's going to cost them. I think the major reason behind this land swap is so a police station can go there, and I'm completely for Northampton Police getting a new police station. Whether we need a new water authority building, really, can't say. So on April 30th, Township Manager for Northampton, Bob Pellegrino, came in and showed you this drawing. That facilities meeting was not televised as yet, so the average Northampton taxpayer does not have that information. They don't really know what this land swap means to them, and I realize that this is not so much a Council Rock issue. It's much more of a Northampton issue. But by voting for that land swap, you're enabling this process to go through much faster. So I'm asking you to delay the vote a month or two and give Northampton a chance to catch up and understand what this land swap will cost them. Probably about fifty million dollars in construction for two buildings. Neither one are approved yet. The township does have an appraisal out on the water authority building, and it's something that seems to be going a little too quick. I thank you for your time, and goodnight, Northampton.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay.
Andy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Nancy, you didn't move fast enough.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. Um, I have about fourteen copies of a sheet that I would like to give to the board and administrators, chair, whatever. I want to make sure you have some of it. Uh, tonight, I want to say it's wonderful that Council Rock no longer has students in trailers. I'm really, really happy about that. Uh, I think it, it's a long time coming. It should've come long before this year, but I take all the good news as good news. Um, I'd like to clarify the issue of trailers and what role they played at Council Rock, because I think this is important when you go to see whether you have room to close a school or not. At no time in Council Rock, at no time, even when it had its highest enrollment, were all the trailers used for full-time classrooms. There was never twenty-five students in seventy-two trailers. The enrollment of, as it came first to the elementary school, then to the middle schools, and then to the high schools. So there was a bubble that sort of went through. Even at Goodno, where we had eleven hundred students, in this building, in eight trailers, and in a renovated Goodno that had forty classrooms and was a combined school, there was never a full-time twenty-five student classroom. Only a very few schools had the culture where they would put a regular ed section outside. Most of the schools used them for their small classrooms. So to say that we once had eighteen hundred students in trailers is just not true at any time, not one day, in Council Rock. So how do we look at the peak of the enrollments and, um, what we have on our September 2015 enrollment? How, how, how much have the schools come down in enrollment? Well, the answer to that, if you take the peaks, which were all different times, is the elementary schools have come down eight-hundred-and-forty-seven students. But that's not really fair because the peak was at different years for each school. If you look at the most elementary schools they ever had, that was in nineteen ninety-nine, and, I'm sorry, uh, and that, that was, uh, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven. Uh, the peak year was 2006-07, and we're down six-hundred-and-eighty-six students since the peak years. But that's not quite right either because Maureen Welsh wasn't built then or wasn't open. So the best way to look at this is to look at the schools that had have all their trailers replaced or never had trailers. What was their peak and what are they now? Okay? So Churchville, never had a, uh, Churchville, we replaced, uh, seven trailers there, and they're down a hundred students from their peak. Goodno, fifty-four. Holland, two-hundred-and-eleven. Maureen Welsh, sixty-three. Rolling Hills, a hundred...I'm sorry, Soul Finestone, a hundred-and-fifty-one. We replaced their trailers. And Wrightstown is a hundred-and-sixty. And the reason why we have to count them is because last year, Newtown was down a hundred-and-eighty-eight. So we have to count what Wrightstown is down in order to, to see what...and that number is eight-hundred-and-five. You do not get to be the institutional memory of this school district if you're gonna take the numbers and, and twist them. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Any other further public comment? Okay, uh, I'm gonna make one slight change to the agenda to take motion item number one and bring it to the front. Uh, Dr. Frazier, how are we gonna present this? Are we gonna have, uh, Mr. D'Angelo?
Mr. D'Angelo?
And if you'd also, Christine, I'd like to, uh, introduce the representatives from CRESPA who may or may not be here.
Okay. I see Chris Cook, who is co-president of CRESPA, along with...is Cindy Lawn with you tonight, Chris? No? Okay. Is it just you? Okay, well, welcome, Chris. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you. And I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Abramson to please read, uh, motion item number one.
I move to approve the July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2019 agreement between the Council Rock Educational Support Professional Association and the Council Rock School District as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Wait a second. Mr. D'Angelo?
Thank you. Uh, members of school board, thank you for having me here to, again, present a collective bargaining agreement to you, hopefully for ratification. This agreement was negotiated between your bargaining committee and the support association bargaining committee. We finished up about mid-July, I think it was, for an agreement to take place this fall. I'm gonna go through the financial highlights of the agreement, and then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. We, we negotiated a four-year agreement. Uh, there are a number of disparate categories in this agreement. This covers your instructional aides, cafeteria aides, clerical aides. It covers maintenance, uh, individuals. It covers computer people. It covers principals, secretaries, assistant principals, secretaries, et cetera. So you have a, a wide range of interests. You have ten-month and you have twelve-month employees. Uh, there are salary schedules that vary in length from one step to, uh, in excess of twenty-four steps. We actually increased one to thirty steps. We increased the grids as follows. A quarter of a percent this year, first year, twenty-five, uh, fifteen, sixteen. And in each of the next three years, the grids will go up by one-point-seven-five percent per year. There will also be step movement for those that are eligible to step within their classifications. The costing out of this agreement, now this assumes, again, a static workforce, that we have no turnover, but the costing will be for twenty, fifteen, sixteen, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Then it jumps to four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand in the second year, the huge differential there being a point-two-five percent increase versus a one-point-seven-five percent increase. Moves to four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand increment in twenty-seventeen, eighteen, and then slides back a little to four-hundred-and-twenty thousand in the last year of the contract for a total cost of a million-three-twenty-nine thousand. It is, with, um, step and the percentage increase, it works out to be about seven percent over the four years of agreement. We did make some structural changes. Uh, the district does do salary comparisons with other Bucks County school districts. And what we concluded is that for our ten-month employees in particular, uh, our schedules were high. So rather than try to negotiate reductions or freezes for the existing employees, which would've been a long, drawn-out, and perhaps nasty process, we were able to get the association to agree to reduce the ten-month employee's starting salary by two dollars an hour. And then it will take four years for those new employees to get onto the current salary schedule. Structurally, this will, this will save the district over careers as turnover occurs, um, well over a million dollars, uh, for a career of the entire unit, not one person, for the entire unit. Remember, we have twenty-three hundred people in these categories. You will see very little of the savings this year, uh, but it is something which should bode well for the district as it negotiates contracts into the future. There were two other categories where we had to make structural changes. In the principal secretaries, somehow, we had gotten into a situation where a principal secretary in his or her twenty-third year, going into the twenty-fourth year, is getting a six-dollar-an-hour increase. We have now spread that increase in increments from years twenty-fourth to year thirty, so they are more manageable to the district. The last structural change was for the assistant principal secretary. Here, the amount was not as stark as the principal secretary, but we smoothed out the increments that existed between steps nine and ten and twenty-three and twenty-four by adding steps, taking this salary schedule out twenty-nine years, virtually the same as the principal secretary. These are not savings that are measurable now, and there are not a lot of people in these two categories, principal secretary, assistant principal secretary, but it is a, a more representative schedule for the district, and it com- and comports with the other categories as you go through your salary schedule. The second major item for financial settlement was in healthcare. This bargaining unit, uh, had personal choice, ten-twenty-seventy, same as the, the Education Association had. The premium share for this group is split into two groups. For those bargaining unit members who earn thirty-two thousand dollars a year or less, they pay six percent of the premium. For those who earn over thirty-two thousand, they pay nine percent of the premium. For the pharmaceutical coverage, they pay ten dollars copay for a generic, twenty dollars copay for the brand. And on maintenance drugs, for a ninety-day supply through mail order, they only pay one copay. The changes we made to this are as follows. For fifteen and sixteen, we have eliminated the ten-twenty-seventy plan and replaced it with the personal choice twenty-thirty-seventy. The major change there is when you go to a, a primary care physician, you'll now pay twenty dollars instead of ten. If you go to a specialist, you'll now pay thirty dollars instead of twenty. In twenty-sixteen-seventeen, we will offer two plans. The twenty-thirty-seventy plan and a plan that Independence Blue Cross mystifyingly calls C3F101. Uh, clearly a Star Wars fan that developed that, that nomenclature. The twenty-thirty-seventy plan, just by plan design changes, forgetting what the premium share is that the employee pays, will save the district about two percent over the current ten-twenty-seventy plan, or the prior ten-twenty-seventy plan. The C3F101 plan will save about five percent or six percent from the, uh, ten-twenty-seventy plan. The employee share for premium under the, uh, twenty-thirty-seventy plan will, by the end of the contract, be ten-and-a-half percent for those making thirty-two thousand or less, and it will be thirteen-and-a-half percent for those making over thirty-two thousand. We're keeping the same three percent spread that existed in the prior contract. For the lesser plan, the C3F1, the, uh, plan will reach six percent for the thirty-two thousand and below, and nine percent for those over thirty-two thousand, which is the current premium share for the ten-twenty-seventy plan. We have also put in a provision, uh, you've heard about the Affordable Care Act and the so-called Cadillac tax. This becomes active in calendar year twenty-eighteen. We have put a provision into the agreement that if a plan would bump up and trigger the Cadillac tax, the parties will revise the plan to ensure that we are under the trigger for the Cadillac tax, so that either the district nor the employees will pay forty percent excise tax on any overage for the Cadillac tax. The prescription changes, if those, if you remember with the presentation we did for the Educational Association, these mirror what we did for the Educational Association. Over the course of this agreement, we will go from two tiers, generic of ten and brand of twenty, to four tiers. Generic will remain at ten. The brand, the formulary, will be twenty dollars. The brand, which includes non-formulary drugs, those are usually the drugs that have recently come under patent, are, will be thirty-five dollars. And we're entering into a new era of specialty drugs. Uh, the best way I can describe a specialty drug is the ones you see advertised on television are specialty drugs. When Phil Mipelson advertises Embrel, Embrel costs you maybe six to eight thousand dollars a month for thirty-day supply. We have put in a fourth tier of fifty dollars. Um, that may not seem a lot, but it is a differential that I think we're the first district in Bucks County to include a, uh, a differential for specialty drugs. We have also moved to two copays for a ninety-day maintenance supply. That is standard in the industry, moving away from a one copay for ninety days as you had under the prior contract. Lastly, we mirrored the Education Association administrators on dental, raising the annual allowance from a thousand to fifteen hundred, and we extended the vision plan under, um, NBA to this bargaining unit as well. Any questions that I can answer? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. D'Angelo. Good to see you again. Appreciate, uh, all, uh, all the efforts in, uh, in helping all of us, all of us through this. Any board comments? Uh, I did want to take the opportunity, Mr. Bylick expresses, uh, his apologies for not being here, obviously detained by his family. He wanted to, uh, to extend thanks to both sides for working, uh, through this agreement uh, in such fashion, especially when we see what happens around us. So he's thankful to everybody and, and, and wanted to share his, uh, his support of the, uh, agreement. Uh, so with that, I'll call for a roll call.
I just want to reiterate a couple of things.
Okay.
The, the, uh, the union did- The union did vote on this already, and Council Rock did put the agreement and the summary online for the community to share. And how many days ago was that?
It was last Friday, so it was six days ago.
Six days.
Yes, and a list serve was sent out as well to this effect.
Correct, and during that period of time, the public could have emailed administration or the school board with any questions or comments or concerns. And just wanted to let that be known.
No, thanks Rick, glad you mentioned that. Any other last comments?
We, in looking at this contract, there were some phrases and some phrasing in this contract, which is not as wrapped up and as tight as we might hope. This was also an issue we had with our CRIA contract. Christine, we spoke about this before.
Yeah, so I did have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Grubb and also talk to Chuck Rem, who is the president of CRESPA. Back in 2012, when we settled the professional staff agreement, we had the district and the association agree to take a look at the contract language and do a cleanup, make sure any old, archaic, non-useful language was removed, and devote some time and energy in the less stressful situation outside of bargaining to just clean up language and get MOUs incorporated into the main body of the document. And I spoke with Mr. Rem today, and he is very agreeable to embarking on that for after the CRESPA agreement goes into effect. So similar to what we did with CRIA a few years ago, we'll work together collaboratively on the document and continue to make that better and better. Bargaining doesn't always end at the end of the bargaining session, so it's a really great thing to be able to come together and keep looking at that document in the period of time until we meet again. So thank you, Mr. Grubb, for that suggestion. It was a real good one.
Excellent. I think that points to the relationship that we've got with our units and the way we're able to work through these things. Any other last comments? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero. Dr. Frazier'd like to make a comment, and then if the folks from CRESPA would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Block. First of all, Mr. D'Angelo, I'll also express my thanks to you. You put in a ton of work, ton of hours, for this school district, and we are most appreciative. To CRESPA, to the membership, Ms. Cook, great to see you this evening. Congratulations to CRESPA, congratulations to the school district. This is certainly a fair deal for both sides, and as the new superintendent here, I can tell you that I'm thankful to both sides that we have labor peace, and all roads do lead to the classroom, we focus on the classroom. And the point with that that I really want to make is going back to an emphasis that as a staff we placed on our first time together last month, and that is that every single member of our team, I don't care what your role is, what your job is, every single member of the team has to be excellent, has to be outstanding at their job in order for students to be able to flourish in the classroom. So a lot of the behind-the-scenes folks are represented by our CRESPA Association, and if things aren't going well on the school bus, if things aren't going well in the cafeteria, with our secretarial staff, with our teaching assistants, et cetera, you better believe that our students notice it, it can upset their day, and then when they end up back in the classroom, they're at a disadvantage at that point. So this membership is extremely important to us, the work they do is extremely important and critical, so I do want to congratulate each and every single one of you, because it does take a team, and you are extremely valuable members of our team. So thank you to you, thanks to this Board of School Directors, and onward we go. Thank you.
Would you like to make any comment? And while she's approaching the mic, big thanks to the administrative team that supported everybody. It makes me proud that we're able to work through all of our agreements so quickly and easily.
Thank you, Chris Cook, co-president of CRESPA. I just wanted to express my thanks to the board and to the teams and everybody that we worked with to get this agreement. I know with our numbers, with the support staff in the district, we have over eighty percent of the support staff lives in the district. So not only do they enjoy working here, there are families here, they're ingrained in the community, and it's a wonderful place to work. We enjoy the relationship that we have with the board and with the district, and it seems to be working out and be beneficial for all, so thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Well done. All right, with that, we will move back to the top of the agenda, and we've got a discussion item about the recording of our committee meetings. Dr. Frazier?
Indeed, thank you. So we, a couple board meetings ago, discussed this topic here, and we made the decision to give it a shot. So since then, we have recorded all three of the committee meetings that have been held. We started with the Finance Committee, then the Academic Standards Committee, and then most recently, the Facilities Committee meetings. So I believe the full board has had an opportunity to watch and listen to those, so at this point, the administration is looking for direction from the board relative to whether we continue with this practice of recording our committee meetings, or whether we might feel otherwise. So we're open to your feedback.
Does anyone want to comment? Maybe we'll start, we'll just go straight around. Mr. Grubb?
The video is difficult to watch, and it's difficult to hear the way it was provided. I think there are better technological solutions to it. I do have to applaud both Bob Reiner and Doug Taylor. Both of these fellows have begun to use PowerPoint for the presentation of your Facilities and Finance Committee meetings, and it makes that much more functional. So I think that there is a better way to do it, leveraging PowerPoint and audio. I don't think it's necessary to see the faces of the individuals, but I would like, and I've asked for this before, to improve the quality of the sound recording in the other room that we use, and then I think we can use that to feed a PowerPoint recording, so that the playback of the audio, which is really the important part, the audio, and then the PowerPoint slides are easily visible. I think that will give the community the best view of what they have. It is difficult, otherwise, there was discussion about having it here and using these cameras, but even these cameras being static, you wouldn't see the PowerPoints, you would... The people's faces, I don't think, are the important part. The numbers, the complexity, Doug, you fill your presentations with diagrams, pictures of the schools, of what we're doing, what the condition is. So I like the idea, it'll work. I think we need to use a slightly different technology, which is a little more geared to recording the presentation. The conversation that occurs then will be synchronized with the PowerPoint, because it just is the way it works, and we can play it back that way. So I'm okay continuing, but I think we have to use... You can't see the presentations these guys made on the playback.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Grubb. Dr. Foster?
Yeah, no, I agree with Mr. Grubb. I think our great presenters, Mr. Taylor and Bob, if they had the mind, and if the image was of the PowerPoint, or even if it was just the PowerPoint with the audio put on top of it, would be better. I agree, we don't have to see everybody else. I will, not that it matters, I will revisit one slight issue. I think Mr. Grubb had raised the concern that from time to time, stuff may get said that if Mr. Cox were here, he would say, hey, you really shouldn't talk about it. I think it happened three times across a couple of different meetings. I know that you raised it during those meetings. So it's gonna happen, that's the way it goes, and we'll just have to deal with whatever that fallout is at some future date, so.
Can I, Andy, can I make a comment? So if we had WebEx technology, if we purchased a WebEx program, which I don't believe is very expensive, and I think probably both of you two are familiar with, I don't know if everybody is, but it's, for those who may not be, it's the ability to log onto your computer and watch a PowerPoint. You can add a video complex, but most people, it's you're watching a PowerPoint while someone's presenting. It has a record feature built in. I don't think it would be any extra for us, but I called in tonight, because I was a little bit late getting to an executive session, and Andy, it was nice enough, I guess, to call me on your cell, I don't know what it was, but I couldn't hear anything. If we had WebEx technology, comes with conference calling and recording, it would solve all of these. I think we should look into how much it would cost. I don't know how often, Dr. Frazier, you might use it to do a presentation for all the principals, or whether other people would find it useful, because we work in a close proximity to each other. Generally, I'm using it when I'm talking to people in other parts of the country, but it seems to me it would solve this problem and could be used for multiple things, and to get one or two licenses, we don't think we need everybody to have their own number or anything, I don't think it would be terribly expensive. So I'm just trying it out. I agree with what you both said, but I think it's an easy solution, recording is easy.
Wendy, I've actually been asking for that for many weeks.
We've been talking about at least the conference line.
I heard the conference line before, I don't know about the WebEx.
Just the other day, I had spoken to Robert about it, as a means to have quick fifteen-minute meeting with his principals, without having to pull them together, that he can have a quick check-in. And so I think, Bob, Robert, you said you were gonna move ahead on that, so that would bring in Wendy's thought. It's the same idea.
Correct. And no need to answer it now, but my understanding, having used it before, is there's a potential to then have that be live, and other people could potentially log in and watch those slides. I don't know if that's possible, just based on the user base, but potentially...
The program we have is purchased by number of people can log in to a WebEx, so you pay more. In other words, if you're saying that could be community, open to the community, and anybody could log in.
Yeah, I don't know if it's feasible, I just know it's got that capacity.
There's a fee to open it more broadly, but I don't know what those fees are, so we should take a look at it.
Yep, great, good comment. Mr. Abramson, any comments?
I think I'm more convinced than ever, something I mentioned once before, about having what I call a hybrid. Having one meeting where information from the administration is imparted to the board, a meeting solely for that, give us the information. Then we have another meeting, and I don't want to burden us with too many meetings, maybe because I'm not going to be on the board that much longer, I can say that, but another meeting where we can discuss and brainstorm, an open meeting with the public, like an advertised meeting with the public, where there'll be discussion and brainstorming on the information that was given to us by the administration in the prior meeting. I do feel it's important for the public to know the opinions of the school board, and when we record the meetings, people can watch it and they can hear our opinions. I would say that we can express our opinions at school board meetings, but we do a lot at the committee meetings that not always come before the board for our votes. So there are things that could happen in committee meetings that are discussed that just never make it to a formal school board meeting. But in those committee meetings, like I said, we discuss and we express our opinions, and I think it is important for the community to know it. So I'm at a... I'm trying to reconcile these different views, because I think the second meeting that I said about the discussion and the brainstorming, maybe, even though school board members will be discussing our opinions at that point, but maybe not record that, because I think it would have a better flow of discussions if it's not recorded, with the tried recording and see if that happens or not, if there's a, what I would call, showing the effect by knowing that it's recorded. But otherwise, just have that meeting, and then at the subsequent school board meeting, any school board member can express their opinions with regard to what happened at that committee meeting. So if someone was discussing that committee meeting, that never made it to a school board meeting for a discussion item or a vote, a school board director can still, under all business or new business, say what your opinions were at that committee meeting with regard to a certain item that was discussed then, so.
Ms. Sexton?
So I would like to see the technology improved. And if that WebEx is a thing that would allow dual use, one for the meetings, and the idea that principals could meet without having to leave their buildings, I hated that principals leave buildings and come here, because the real life, the school is in the school and not here. So I'm good with us looking for better technology. I tried to watch the meeting, I hate listening to my own voice, and I figure I lived through it once, that's more than enough, but it was cumbersome to watch. The colors are weird, we were all talking, some of us are moving in and out, it just, it doesn't look professional at all. And so if there were better technology, we're a school district after all, that would be better. So I'm not against the idea, it didn't seem to chill me in any of the committee meetings, so it's okay to go forward with, but I think it would be better if we had better technology.
Yeah, I agree. First, I agree that there were concerns coming in around the comfort level of the public and the board members to express their opinions. I didn't see any of that. In fact, I think we joked about it at the meetings, I think everybody was free. I think from a technology perspective, we have some opportunities. What's great is that after the first meeting alone, Mr. Fredrickson was talking about some things that we could do potentially. Now we've got some other ideas, so I'd love to see us continue to get better at offering, you know, a more refined product for folks, so it's more useful, and also take the opportunity, now that we're filming this too, and we've had some internal discussions around how we get more effective managing these meetings as a group. So I'm overall supportive. I've gotten a lot of feedback from the public as well, that they appreciate seeing these, they're very helpful, and I think it's something that we should be forward with. Ms. Brooks?
I think the recordings were a great thing to have. I too have heard community feedback that has been supportive. I honestly think, for me, I didn't think the audio was a problem. I'm not going to say that I watched every meeting from start to finish, but I did sample each of the meetings at different spots. The audio, for me, was perfectly fine. The video was problematic in cases where the slides were heavy in details and heavy in numbers, and quite frankly, I was just sitting at home saying, well, why did we just zoom in a little bit? We probably could have seen it. So I don't know if it's as simple as that, but, you know, it is retrospective, so I don't know... I don't know, it doesn't really matter what the technology is, but I think that the exercise was a good one, and reaffirms the importance of having those meetings taped.
Excellent. Yes?
I would agree as well. All the feedback I have received from the community has been positive. I do think when it's a static camera in that regard, we're getting in our own way, we're moving in and out, and that's probably distracting, so just refining, and I'm sure Matt has some ideas, and we've talked about some ideas, but I think just refining the approach will go a long way.
Any further comments? Great, well, I think we have our marching orders, I think everybody's in agreement, we'll continue to do it, but we'll take the opportunities with feedback to continue to do a more effective job making it more watchable, whether that's technology or what we do. So, you know, I appreciate the public pushing us to do that, and the way we went about it, it's a good deal, so.
Did anybody look at the number of interviews at these meetings from the public?
I know I have not, and at this point, the only one of the three videos that we posted publicly was the academic standards, and that was because we had made a prior commitment to record that one and put it out there because of the nature of those two topics that evening, so the other two were not posted publicly. So waiting on the board's direction here this evening.
That can make a difference, too. I mean, you could look at how many people are actually viewing it.
Sure.
It may be an indicator.
Yeah, especially before we make a significant investment, if one becomes an option. So it sounds like, let's release those, too?
Yeah, so we'll post those tomorrow morning, and it sounds like our immediate marching orders are to do some additional research around pricing and technological options, and Mr. Fredrickson, I know, has already done some of that, and he just sent me a link for WebEx and the pricing structure, so we'll get on that first thing tomorrow morning.
Great, well, I think that's a great move for transparency for the community, but more importantly, I know that sometimes when it's, you know, when you miss a board meeting, that's gonna be a lot easier for us to play catch-up, so, great stuff. We'll move to the consent agenda now. Mr. Grubb, if you could read that first motion, I think we have one adjustment.
Correct. I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through E, I'm sorry, A through F, as contained in the attachments to the agenda, with the modification to the tax adjustments and refunds as discussed previously, subject to audit.
Second. Dr. Foster, again? Thank you. Any questions for the administration on anything? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero. And now we'll move to... Yes. Motion passes eight zero. And now we'll move to item number two under orders, items for board approval, personnel actions. Dr. Foster, please?
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Grubb. Ms. Trioli, any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. We'll move on to number three. Ms. McKessy, please.
I move to award air filter bid number fifteen dash forty-one to Advanced Air Service Group at a total cost not to exceed $24,812.65, subject to audit.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Any questions for Mr. Reinhart?
Okay, so this is the air filter, right? So you had helpfully put how much the air filters cost last year. And it was about eight thousand more this year. I didn't know whether it was more air filters or the bids were higher. I mean...
No, what happened was there was a backlog of filters that had been in stock for many years. And we've used all those filters. So this year, the bid was higher than it has been in the past to acquire what we needed.
Thanks.
Other questions?
And the nature of the bid was that it had to single source rather than...
It's my understanding that in the past, when we went out to multiple sources, there were some vendors that did not supply. And we'd rather have the hammer on one vendor as opposed to one or two vendors that were not performing as well as another one.
Okay, hearing no objections, I'd ask the secretary to record the motion as passing with unanimous consent. And moving to number four, Ms. Thomas, please.
I move to approve amendment number eight to the facility service agreement with Arrowmark Management Services for the 2015-2016 school year at a cost not to exceed $2,820,687.72, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McKessy. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? We have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Ms. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Move to number five. Mr. Grubb, please.
I move to approve Cornerstone Advisors Asset Management Incorporated contract at annual cost of $25,000, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Foster. I just want to take an opportunity, since Mr. Beilich is not here, to recognize the leadership role he's played in driving this through along with Mrs. Thomas. Mr. Grubb, it's been a passion of his for a while. I know he was sorry that he couldn't be here to vote on it.
If you want to explain what you had. Mr. Reinhart, you want to?
I sure will.
Give the public a quick overview of this one.
In the past, the business office, myself, and actually Gail Chloe, was the people, the person that would make our investment decisions, and we would move money based on depositories and the things that you've approved. This is actually gonna be an expert in between us and the transaction at this point and the board. I think it's gonna be valuable to see what they see and how we invest as opposed to myself just looking at it. The first thing that the board will see is that we're gonna have representatives coming out to a finance committee meeting, or more than one finance committee meeting, to develop a very detailed policy in regard to investment practices. It's gonna spell out everything. It's gonna have fiduciary responsibility-type information in there. It's gonna be something that I'm not sure many school districts have seen, at least in this state. So I'm really excited to see that and how that's spelled out and how that helps us. And then they are going to actually look at advising us on money managers, people that would actually come in and, based on our cash flows and working with the business office, to actually help us manage where we would put our funds and how we would do that. I don't think you should look at it and think that, oh, we're gonna change everything that we do now. But I think there's gonna be someone, another set of eyes other than my own and Ms. Chloe's eyes on the investments we have. Look for compliance, look for safety issues and things such as that. I look forward to this. I think it's a good thing. And I'm anxious to, I'm sure I'm gonna teach them some things as long as they, as well as them teaching me some things about this. But I think for $25,000 with us investing, at times, we could have $160 million in the bank. I think this is a good investment, and we'd like to see where this goes. But I do think we may be one of the first school districts in the state that is actually putting this fiduciary between the business office, the board, and the investments. So I think it's a good thing.
Excellent. Mr. Reinhart, thanks for all the work. I know you did a lot. And I think this, to your point, goes a long way in showing that, you know, we're willing to go above the status quo. Any questions for Mr. Reinhart?
Jerry, you were involved in the interviews. Did you want to say anything more about it? Or is that...
No, we spoke. We had at least six respondents to our survey. We interviewed, we chose to interview a number of them who we thought were preferential. I have to tell you that the company that we are choosing here, Cornerstone, we were very impressed with. I know that while I'm not here, Mark Beilich went to visit, so did Gail, so did Bob, went to visit them to get a feel for their offices and experience. I think all of the ones we spoke to were good. This one really is anxious for the business. It gives Bob an extra level of consultations, an additional level of security from his perspective of looking at and making sure our investments are correct. It's good checks and balances. And it's, lastly, the number that we saw tonight at $25,000 a year, it will be a new expense for us. This is not an expense we had in the past. But it's also one that Bob, through his office and with Gail, really, it made the number come down a tremendous amount. The company's eager to work with us. Candidly, they're eager to work with us. I think they're doing it at a loss because they wanna be able to get into this space and really prove their guts on it. Wendy, you have anything you want to add?
I would completely agree. We spent some significant time asking about, you know, there's a lot of roles around what we can do and what we can't do, mostly what we can't do as far as investment goes. And really questioning, you don't have a lot of other school districts. Do you know this? Are you sure? You know, that kind of thing. It appeared, actually, I think both the firms that we interviewed in person, both had done a fair amount of work. Neither one were in the space yet. But this firm really, I think, is going to work hard and be very thorough. It's a new space for them. It's a new expense for us. They cut their price significantly from their original proposal so that they could learn the business. So they're not coming to us saying, we know everything. There's no, we've done it 100 times either. But I think it's an opportunity for a great partnership. And I think we'll probably both learn. And, you know, really, as Andy said, Mark really championed this. And I think it's good checks and balances. And I think we're all gonna look back, you know, in a year and say, how'd they help? How, where are we? What's the value going forward? Take another look at it. Probably take us two years before we really see, you know, our full value out of it. But I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
They offer a selection of tools for analysis and investigation, which is...
Very sophisticated.
Very. Thank God Bob and Gail understand it. It is deep finances. And Mark Beilich can also have an appreciation for it. So I think we're doing the right thing.
Yeah. And again, great job on the work. And to Mark, the amount of things that had to be gone through to, you know, the packets I saw were immense. So, you know, for folks who don't see what we really have to do, sometimes that was a lot of work. So thank you to all of you. Any other questions for the front?
So the description that you guys gave and that I heard from Bob was interesting because I was worried that we would get a really small firm and that we would actually end up with more risk than we currently have. And so it sounds like this is a pretty big firm, but they don't have school districts as clients. This is a new area.
It's a good question. But I don't know that I think they're big. I mean, well, it depends how you define big. I think they manage a great, yeah, I think they have a lot of assets. I don't think they have 300 people working for them. But I, yes, I think they manage a lot of assets. They seem to have a great deal of experience.
A lot of firms have a lot of distinct experience with long-term assets.
Yeah.
Pension funds, these long-term investment assets. This will be new for them. The rules are still the same in terms of, you know, making sure the money is safe and secure and the additional requirements we have, which talks about the nature of securities and the collateralization. So it's good. And I'm very comfortable with it from the perspective of giving Bob a partner, Bob and Gail, a partner to speak to and really bounce things off of who's as knowledgeable as he is.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Bill. I just didn't want to misread. The other thing I do that, I actually think it gives us less accountability, not more. Because now it's really between Bob and then now this puts an advisor in the middle of it, who's got a great deal of experience. So I think it's, we have a lot of money in investments. It's worth to take a look at. And we'll look at it in two years and see what we think.
I'll give credit also, which was Mark Beilich and Bob had spoken about some incidents not of this district, of inappropriate investments by other districts. And this is what sparked Mark Beilich's interest in. And that was out there. This is an out there.
Okay. Madam Roll Call Vote, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
And Mr. Reinhart did a ton of work on it. So thank you very much.
Well done, Bob.
It was something I loved doing. It was very interesting to me.
All right. Topic of the week. Ms. Sexton, could you read number six, please?
I move to approve the 2015-2016 Council Rock School District bus, school bus list as contained in the attachment to this agenda. God bless.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grubb. Before I look for other questions, I just wanted to ensure that we've worked through all our issues and we've got the bus list where they should be to ensure that we're doing what we need to be doing.
That sounds like a loaded question. We are in good shape. We do still have a couple issues that we continue to work through. But they're only a couple, and they're in isolated spots. So relative to the entire school district and the entire bus fleet, K to 12, we're in really good shape at this point. So we've resolved the vast majority of issues that have been out there. And really, a ton of credit to our transportation department, which Bob Reinhart ultimately oversees, but Andy Rowe coming in as our supervisor of transportation. Joe McClay has been working on a ton of these issues as well, as our director of elementary education. So we still have a couple smaller pieces, but we would consider those to be tweaks and minor adjustments that happen really all throughout the school year, any given school year. Nothing that needs to hold up anything here this evening.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a question? Did the addition of the buses, I'm sorry, alleviate some of the concerns that folks were having at Newtown?
It alleviated a lot of the concerns that we've had, yes. We still do have, and I mentioned the isolated spots, those tend to be concentrated in either Wrightstown Elementary or Newtown Elementary, both situations. Wrightstown in particular, where we experienced pretty significant busing issues that first week of school, has very, very much improved. But we still have a couple parents that Mr. McClay and I are working with and engaging with in conversation.
Most of the feedback that I have had from folks has been, I won't say it's all been positive by any stretch, but it has been positive with regard to the responsive nature. And people are grateful that new buses have been added and that people are working toward a better alternative or a more efficient alternative.
Good. We certainly understand where they're coming from when they approach us. So thanks.
Ms. Abramson?
Are any of these issues that you're working through affecting the list that we're approving tonight, either by adding a bus or changing a bus stop?
We don't believe so at this point. If there is, if there is anything that would change it of such a nature that we need to come back to you, then that's exactly what we'll do. But it is school code for us to come and have these approved. So my recommendation is that we do approve these this evening. And if we do make any changes that need to come back to the board, then that's exactly what we'll do.
As an amendment?
Absolutely.
And both the length of stay and then also some of the volume of kids on the bus, which I know sometimes is hard to predict relative to, you know, parents driving and not driving. We're working through all those things.
Exactly. And we even had some differences from week one to week two because week two, a lot more schools opened up, public as well as private schools. So there was just a greater volume of traffic. So some of where we thought we were okay in week one, issues popped up in week two. So we've been continually making some of those adjustments.
Okay. And a little off topic, but maybe good for the public to hear. With some of the road closures that have happened, how are we doing? Did we get through all those?
Well, we're still getting through it. We have still a road closure through Monday, I believe, in the borough itself. Otherwise, Pence Park, we navigated pretty well. And overall, we weathered it pretty well. The transportation department, again, has really done just a fantastic job. The bus that we added at Wrightstown before we went ahead and did any communication or put anything out at all to parents in writing, we made sure that the bus drivers actually went out there between runs, even on a weekend, and did practice runs, just to make sure that they're able to see exactly what's what and where is where, exactly where those stops are. And their feedback to us is invaluable when it comes to that. And so they likewise have done a fantastic job with some of these road construction and road closure issues that we've encountered.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments for the administration?
I mean, you might want to mention that we bus all public, all private, all parochial school students throughout the district, we take them to school and we bring them home from school. And sometimes we take them in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon and bring them back. So thousands, 20,000 rides a day. So occasionally, a bus might be a little late. That can happen when you're busing thousands and thousands and thousands of kids.
Just because you said all, just to qualify that, I think it's within 10 miles, private school, 10 miles of the school district boundaries.
Correct. That's right.
On nice new propane buses.
Yes.
Well, you can always look at the bright side. You don't have to bus through Philadelphia the week. The Pope's coming. There's always a bright side.
I won't be going to Stires Orchard on the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
All right. Madam Roll Call Vote, please, Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. We'll move to number seven. Ms. Brooks, please.
I move to approve the agreement for exchange of real estate with North Hampton Township in the form attached to this agenda and subject to final solicitor review, providing for the conveyance of a portion of District Map, District Tax Map Parcel Number 31-15-142-1, which is unused and unnecessary, to the township in exchange for a portion of Township Tax Map Parcel 31151428.
Mr. Taylor, could you give us a quick overview? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Do I have a second, Mr. Dr. Foster?
Sure.
Thank you. Maybe just give us a quick overview, especially based on the public comment that the last meeting wasn't televised?
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. There's a portion of the property at Rich Borough Elementary School that borders the township properties, as discussed earlier this evening by the community. The township is requesting a portion of the school property that is a wooded lot that is unused by the district and likely would ever be utilized for any building structures due to its proximity to the border itself. And a portion of the site that includes a maintained softball, baseball field that is utilized by us on a regular basis by the district and community, likely. The request of the township is to exchange the piece of wooded lot, which is owned by us, for the ball field portion of the site, which is maintained and utilized by us, but actually owned by the township. It's a pretty good deal on our end relative to the conditions of those two pieces of the property and usable space. So administratively, we believe that it's a good, a good deal and an opportunity to work with our, you know, neighboring... So, administratively, we believe that it's, um, a good, a good deal and an opportunity to work with our, you know, neighboring authorities.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, any questions or comments on this side for Mr. Taylor? Over here. Uh, Dr. Foster?
So, it, it, it was raised, um, whether we should hold off on, on, on the vote because there wasn't clarity as to what North Hampton was actually, you know, going to do with the land, whether it was approved and all this. But, but my understanding, uh, what it asks Mr. Cox to speak to it is that the, this, this land swap that we're voting on envisions the possibility that, that North Hampton actually says never mind and, and, and that's, that it would revert or, or something to that effect. Is that-
That, that's fair to say, I think. The, the agreement provides, uh, that North Hampton Township's obligation to close is conditioned upon township approval of the plan that the township will submit for its project. And, um, so if North Hampton Township is unable to secure approval, um, honor before June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, it is not obligated to close, and it could walk from the transaction at that point. Um, so, so the, the agreement contemplates that North Hampton Township will submit its plan. Even though it's the township, it still has to secure approval of its plan. It will se- it will submit its plan for approval. It will undertake, uh, to do that and bear the costs of that, but its obligation to close, um, is contingent upon approval of that plan honor before June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. And, uh, the reason that date is in the contract is because school district solicitor did not want an indefinite obligation on the part of the school district to have to convey a parcel to the township, and so the agreement now has this drop dead date of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, which we felt was fair and enough time for North Hampton to do what it has to do. By, by way of some additional context, a transaction of this sort, uh, requires one of two things to occur under the school code in order for the district, uh, to meet its obligations under the law. Either, uh, the board has to approve the agreement with a minimum five-vote majority and then obtain, uh, Court of Common Pleas approval of the transaction. That's one option. Where the second option is that the board could approve the agreement by way of a two-thirds vote, and, uh, the deed that it conveys to North Hampton Township would then have a reverter clause, providing that if the township no longer used the property at some future time for township purposes, the parcel would revert back to the school district. And that second option, court approval, would not be required. And so if the board approves the agreement tonight by a vote of six-three or more, uh, six-two or more, then North Hampton Township will have a choice. It can either, uh, take a deed from the school district for the parcel it will be acquiring with a reverter provision, and it will not have to pursue court approval. Or it will take a deed without a reverter provision, and it would then have to secure Court of Common Pleas approval, and the agreement provides that the township would have to bear the costs securing that court approval as well. So, that's the, the context of the, of the transaction.
Thanks.
Mr. Grubb, any comments, questions?
I, I just wondered, is Mrs. Helt was speaking on behalf of the Water and Sew Authority to ask us not to do it? Or was she asking for herself? Oh, I'm looking at Christine. I'm sorry, I'll be on Michelle.
She's not here.
She's not here.
Oh.
You're asking no one there.
I'm looking at Christine, sorry. Okay, um, sorry. I just wonder, I didn't know what the impetus was not to, just for clarification, it's, it's for history. The, um, the property that the Civic, the Senior Center is on was a swap from the school district to the Senior Center many years ago. Uh, not many, not that many years ago, when we had built South, uh, the township had condemned the land next to South for a swimming pool. And when that was not built, the school district swapped land so that we would have the contiguous space around the school district. So, from my perspective, um, that, that land included space that was a, a ball field probably pre-existed the swap, and this is really from my perspective, in some ways just clearing up what had happened. And I'm really very appreciative of the township, uh, when they presented it and I asked for, uh, the concession around pervious surface, and they're also covering all the attorney fees the district would have involved in it, um, long-term. I, I think it's a good plan. I think it's, it's a good community effort for the, for this community.
Any other questions or comments?
One question. Mr. Taylor, this will probably be my last opportunity to ask you this question.
Oh, no.
Is the parcel that is owned by Council Rock School District, the Director of Facilities, I need to hear from you, unused and unnecessary to the Council Rock School District?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss that.
I'll make a comment. I, I would say for-
Hang on, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson.
For me, we're getting, we're giving up a piece of property our kids can't use and getting one our kids can use. I'm sitting here worried about the kids at Council Rock, so I, I, I guess, you know, I, I understand there was some conversation about what the township's gonna, that's not my job, as far as I see, uh, as far as I see it. Um, I, I think my job is to worry about the kids, and if I'm doing that, whether they do their plan not, or frankly not, I'd rather have the piece of property my kids can, the kids in the district can play on than have woods where they can't. So, I, I don't know. It's, that's how I'm looking at it personally.
Okay, uh, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Uh, last motion, Dr. Foster, please, number eight.
Okay, let me find it. I got it. I move to approve the, I, you know, in a way, I would like to ask, could, uh, Mrs. Sexton approve this? No?
What, do you want to make her say Gatsby?
I do.
Why does he want to do that?
Because it's not going to be much longer than we can. So, Mrs. Sexton, would you please-
I move to approve the Gatsby forty-five agreement with Conrad Siegel Actuaries as contained in the attachment to this agenda at total cost not to exceed eight thousand three hundred dollars, subject to law.
Second.
There you go.
Any questions? Hearing no objections, I'd ask the Secretary to record the motion as passing with unanimous consent. We'll move to the Solicitors' Report. Mr. Cox?
Mr. Block, there was an executive session prior to tonight's meeting for the discussion of collective bargaining. Three matters that are, uh, in litigation or potentially in litigation, and there was discussion around, uh, the district's potential acquisition of real estate, all covered by the executive session exception. Other than that, uh, that's my report.
Mr. Cox, there was another executive session that I don't believe you attended. Mr. Fra- Dr. Fraser, you called that after our facilities meeting, I believe?
Thursday.
But last Thursday night, which was also to discuss, uh, which was a prelude to the motion we voted on earlier this evening around personnel and contract managers.
Fair enough.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, any old business from the board? Any new business from the board? Okay, we'll move to the committee reports. Academic Standard, Ms. Brooks?
Uh, our next meeting will be Thursday, October first. Uh, we will be discussing a variety of high school issues, scheduling, uh, program planning, courses, shuttle courses, and, uh, within that context, there'll be a conversation about the German program.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. McKessy, Facilities?
Uh, Facilities met on September tenth. As you heard tonight, the, um, recording and audio will be posted to the website tomorrow, you said? Um, it was something of an abbreviated meeting due to other business that the board was attending. We did discuss facilities improvements, um, most specifically at Goodknow, Newtown, Holland, and the Network Operations Center at North, um, as well as a brief capital projects update. Next meeting will be October eighth at six-thirty.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Grubb, Finance?
Finance, the items we've discussed have been discussed here. Uh, the next finance meeting is September twenty-fourth at, uh, six-thirty P.M. Across the hall. We have four topics on the agenda for the evening. Uh, update on the two thousand sixteen financial plan. PFM will be coming in from Lancaster to visit with us and talk. Uh, we're also going to look at Edulog Hosting Services, for those who remember. Edulog is the bus routing system that we use, uh, that Andy Rowe, Jack Piñero, use downstairs to make sure we get our buses to the right points at the right time. Our third item that night will be, uh, probably something that, uh, uh, Mr. Dr. Foster and Dr. Bo- uh, Mr. Violet will talk with us about too, which will be the Middle Bucks Institute Technology Bond refinancing. And so since both of them sit on that, you know, refunding, since both of those sit, then sit on the, uh, board there, I'm sure that will be a topic that they'll contribute importantly to. And lastly, uh, we'll further the discussion on the new board policy around the capital assets. This has to do with inventorying and managing assets beyond a certain point of, of materiality, uh, as required under Patty's favorite topic, Gatsby.
Dr. Foster, Policy Committee and MBIT?
Okay, so, the plan for the Policy Committee, we're willing to get everyone's input, in talking with Dr. Fraser, given the, the pace of work, uh, early October's, uh, gonna be, uh, an important time for us. So, the thought is, we could have a policy meeting, committee meeting, on, on October fifteenth prior to the board meeting and/or November nineteenth prior to the board meeting. What would we do there? Uh, it would be a working meeting. So, the, uh, the urgent policies that we, with the administration agreed to cover, then, that, that absolutely have to get done.
Excuse me, we have an Act thirty-four hearing on November nineteenth.
So, which one? Oh, is that, oh, that's when that one is. Sorry, I knew, I was worried there's a conflict. So, October fifteenth is, is the option, and then other than that, it'll have to be some other ninth in November. So, what do you think about October fifteenth? Six P.M. is on. Okay. So, it would be urgent policies and then we'll, we'll work on some of the, the easy-to-get-through policies. Uh, for instance, uh, Mr. Abramson pointed out that our, our listing of schools includes the Chancellor Center and doesn't include Maureen Welch. I think we can fix that pretty quickly. So, a few of those, just to kind of cleanse our palate.
Some of, some of our, uh, our, our voting districts aren't quite complete either.
Right, voting dis- so, we've got a few things we can clean up pretty quickly, um, and just get ready for consent agenda items, uh, for those.
Can I make a request? It's really, um, a little bit to do with you, Dr. Foster, um, but, Dr. Fraser. So, can we get that on Board Doc's calendar?
Absolutely.
And the Act One stuff? So, you know, anything that's happening in the district that, it's just, I know we have multiple calendars for multiple reasons, but I do rely on that one. I didn't have the, I didn't have the Act One on here either. So, if we could just put them on, that'd be great.
Sure thing, first thing tomorrow. Thank you.
And, Dr. Fraser, your, your meeting, that would be great.
Foster.
Foster. Dr. Foster.
Too many doctors, too many doctors here.
So, that's, is that okay for policy?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. MBIT, you want that?
Sure.
So, Mr. Violet and I were out there this past Monday. Uh, the highlights, we talked about the goals for the year. The administration presented them. I won't go through all of them, but you can go to the website, look at the board package, see what our goals are. Marketing is an enduring, uh, interest. So, we want to, of course, increase student retention and, and get more students to go. But also there's, uh, compelling interest from PDE for what they call non-traditional students. So, believe it or not, in cosmetology, you tend to have more young women than men, and in welding, more young men than women. Yeah, I know. It's, it's amazing. This, but, but, young women are perfectly capable of welding and, and, uh, and, and young men are perfectly capable of doing cosmetology. So, PDE would like us to do better in having a little higher numbers, uh, and, and they call that non-traditional students.
Are they giving money out for that?
What's that?
Are they giving money out to help make that happen?
You know, that would help a lot, and I don't think that's part of the marketing plan.
Okay, just wondering.
But if Council Rock will send us at MBIT more money, maybe, I don't know, it's a thought. We gotta get the money from somewhere.
Well, interestingly enough, I was, uh, with, uh, Mr. Campbell over in North the other day, and you're here constantly talking about our opportunity to send more kids, and I believe he's our, our administration representative over there, and, and man, he echoed those concerns, so we're just not getting our money's worth over there. So, if there is anything that we can do, uh, school-centric around the high schools that we're not doing, seems like an opportunity to your point.
It's, there's a lot of pieces to it, and I know Dr. Fraser and I have talked, and, uh, and, and he's talked with Kathy Strauss, the head administrator there, so there'll be ideas percolating for the future. Other goals include the new programs. We're always looking at what are the new high priority programs that MBIT should be thinking about. What, you know, one thing, you know, you can go there and get your haircut. You can go and eat in, 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 in the restaurant there, but they're also going to start a dental clinic. So, if you, if you, if you want to get your teeth cleaned, um, you know, and then there's this new program that we started, sports therapy and exercise that, that we're getting going. Um, so that's our exciting new program. We also talked about the farmhouse. I mentioned it before, built around eighteen, eighteen forty, uh, to fix it up. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to tear it down, about forty thousand. We're still fighting about that, but we expect a decision as to which way to go in the next few months. So, stay tuned. That's all I got for MBIT.
Thank you, sir.
Second, on, on Bill's topic of MBIT?
Yeah, sure.
I, I was, uh, in a meeting this morning, and I was approached by a, uh, a person who was part of the, uh, I want to make sure I get it right. It, it has to do with manufacturing. It's the, uh, they're gonna, there's gonna be a Manufacturing Day on October second, and there is a group called the National Tooling and Machining Association. And I mentioned it as a segue on, onto, uh, Bill's comments, which is, um, they were talking, this woman, uh, was talking about how much companies in Bucks County are in demand for and looking for people with technical industrial skills. And it really is something that, that ties in as well to MBIT. So, I'll, I'll mention that there is, and there, you can probably look it up on the web and find that on October second, I believe it is, is, uh, National Manufacturing Day. And there is a group called NTMA. Uh, the president of it is based over here in Hatbrow. It's, it's an interesting tie-in because there's a lot of opportunity there, and MBIT, you know, students coming out of MBIT in many different disciplines, they're qualified. They have, you know, a welder, you were talking about welding. A welder makes a good salary, and, uh, that's an opportunity. So, I just want to put it forward that October second, the county commissioners were also commenting that they're going to be involved in it, is National Manufacturing Day. Um, I wish I could give you a contact number. I don't have one, per se. But, uh, you can look up the link for Pennsylvania Manufacturing Day, and I think it's interesting. I, I recommend that students take a look at it as well, because maybe that will give you a clue as to what you want to do, and do you want to become involved with MBIT, uh, because maybe that gives you an eye on it in the future. So, I'm sorry to segue out here, thank you.
Oh, no, that's, no, I, I just agree. In fact, I was talking to a geothermal installer the other day, and he was describing how hard it is to get the kind of talent they need to install those systems. And, uh, he's desperate for, for folks with those technical skills. But it, whether it's, it's precision machining or, you know, geothermal installation, it's the same story all, all across the Commonwealth. People, there's a lot of good jobs out there that are very hard to fill because people don't have the skills, but MBIT can get them to you.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. And, uh, we got an email from Patty this morning, so I'm sure there's an IU update.
So, the IU, uh, the transition is complete. Mark Hoffman is now Director of the Bucks County IU. Dr. Galasso has left. No office in the building. Uh, I'm gonna miss him a lot. He did a great job for us over the past eight years, and, uh, there was a luncheon for him to say goodbye, and he was pretty well roasted, and it was very, it was great. Um, we also closed on a teacher's contract at the IU. The teachers had waited over a year, so we had a four-year contract, the first year of which there was no movement, and, uh, we settled- which there was no movement, and we settled on a teacher's contract on Thursday, on Tuesday night. It will be approximately all in and all said and done, about seven percent over four years. So not too much. And that was good for us, and good for Mark Hoffman to start, just as you, with a contract that's finished, you know, not have to come in and negotiate a new contract. I sent you all an email, and that email was a PowerPoint of a program. Many of our teachers are itinerant, so they go from place to place. They might be somewhere in the morning, somewhere in the afternoon. And one of their problems, and one of the things that held up the signing of a contract, was that they had so much paperwork related to, where did they arrive? What minute did they get there? How many minutes did they stay there? What service did they perform when they were there? Who did they perform the service for? How, is this something that can be reported for reimbursement or not? And so one of the technicians at the IU created this program, and now all of our itinerant teachers were given iPad-type devices, and they can go out, and now they can just do that as they go. They're not coming back and typing up, it saved minutes in the contract. Fred D'Angelo negotiated it, and he was happy with getting that all together. So a lot of good things are happening at the IU.
Thanks, Ms. Sexton. We'll move to our second round of public comment. Is there any public comment?
All right, I have one more thing to say.
Sorry, Nancy.
All right, I'm sorry. So all of you need to think now, because I have October and November, and then December comes, and you pick your committees. I hope somebody will really want to come to the IU. There's many opportunities for leadership there. I've served as president, I've served as vice president every time I'm there. All you have to do is show up, and you can be greatly involved. So I want you to think hard, because I don't want anybody to do it that isn't gonna go every time.
Thank you. Please.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. I'd like to thank the district for putting the elementary enrollment up on the web, and I understand the secondary was gonna go up today. When I left for the meeting, it still wasn't up. I look forward to seeing what that is. Once again, the elementary school enrollment is down. It has been going down for a while, and we've known that it was gonna go down since 2006 when we did a study. That study was published by the district in May of 2007, and it said between 2016 and 17, the elementary enrollment would be at a low between 5323 and 5506 at a high. We're already below the high, and we have another year to go. Now, in a couple of weeks, you're gonna have some discussions about capital planning, and I want you to know that I've won the record in favor of closing Wrightstown. And I believe that it can be done. And the reason why I believe that it can be done is because the three sister schools that would feed into Wrightstown are down 271 students. And this is with equal, more classrooms than they had at their peak, because Goodknow has three more. So Wrightstown, I'm sorry, Salfine Stone's down 151. They had two trailers, we added two classrooms, they have the same amount. Goodknow is down 66, and they have three more classrooms than they had at their peak. And the other school is Newtown, and Newtown is down 54, and we just put an influx of students there, and we only have 160 students at Wrightstown. And if you add in one of the New Hamp, North Hampton schools, such as Richborough, which is down 178, that's 449 seats down since their peak. Now, I always said that we talk about the wrong thing here. What we need to do is look at the cost per student at each school. And I'm very concerned at how this year, the cost of student has probably gone up or skyrocketed at Holland Elementary, because even though we put an influx of special ed students, which cost more per student, their enrollment is still down a couple. And Wrightstown, we have a lot less students sharing the overall overhead and everything of that school. And I think the goal for the district would be to get the cost per student as low as possible, and to get the savings from closing the school, and those savings at the cost per student, and put it in other things that the district need. I am pro-public education, I am pro-putting more money into technology, and that is why I am on this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comment? Mr. McGill?
Just to, Steve McGill, Holland, PA, just to kind of tag along on Phil Foster's report and Jerry's comment about jobs. In the last month, I've had conversations with two friends who are in manufacturing, customized manufacturing. They're both scared to death because they're having trouble finding machinists, all right? I don't know what, you know, what the school district does in terms of supporting, you know, kids going into the trades. I know they do a lot of talk about how many kids go to college, and then I read about all the parties at the colleges, so I'm not sure where that goes. But, you know, a machinist will make over $100,000 if he's any good, or she's any good. I have a cousin who was a machinist for General Motors, building at one point locomotives, and he retired when he was 47. He's a multimillionaire on Chicago. So, you know, these are not low-paying jobs. If you, if you ask, you know, if you do the research, and you ask, what kind of car do most of the millionaires in this country drive? The answer is, it's a pickup truck, because they're tradespeople. So give that some thought when you're thinking about what's good for the kids in the classroom, all right? We are focused on the kids in the classroom. It isn't all about academic knowledge. Take care.
Thanks, Steve. Any other public comment?
Mr. Block, can I just close the loop on Mr. Grup's executive session announcement?
Sure.
That occurred on September 10th. It involved discussion of a personnel matter, collective bargaining, and a confidential student matter. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Thanks for clarifying, Mr. Cox. I'll move to board comment. Any board comment?
I have one minor comment. So one of the interesting things about being on the school board, which I hadn't really appreciated, is that you can call people, and they will give you their advice just out of a courtesy. So on a couple of occasions, I call law enforcement to ask, you know, issues that come our way, and they take their time, and it's awesome. So when I was struggling to understand our H-back choices for our middle school projects, I actually, I was talking with Mr. Grup about geothermal, what you have in your house, I think, and he pointed out that Bucks County Community College had installed the system, and I asked who had done it for them, and they said it was Snyder Hoffman in Bethlehem. So I called them up as kind of a second opinion, unpaid, unpaid second opinion, and they actually talked to me. Nick Keins, an engineer there, spent quite some time talking, and it was a delightful conversation. And he basically didn't tell me anything that was different than what I was hearing internally, which was, which was good, but it was nice to have access to a second opinion, and I really appreciate it from him. And so there you go.
You and Jerry talk about geothermal a lot?
We've been, we've talked about it because of the middle schools, and I know that Mr. Grup was an early adopter.
I installed it residentially, and it is interesting, because when you look at the prices and the way things have moved, and as Doug is looking at accumulating our points for, you know, we have those two, we have two $2 million, we have two $2 million grants, and we have to achieve a certain level for the middle schools that we're projecting. And one of the things that Bill and I were interested in was what would geothermal do from a points perspective? And while it may do points, what it doesn't seem to do at this point, because of the great reduction in gas prices, is it doesn't save you the money that you might want. It still may be valid for getting you the points on, as a lead certified building, but so that's what I guess.
Any other board comment?
I'm not sure.
Sure.
Since the last Academic Standards meeting, the school board has received many emails with regard to the issue of full-day kindergarten. And I don't recall receiving so many emails about any subjects since the split of the class of 2003. So I appreciate those emails, and I believe the rest of the board would also, and I hope that we continue these discussions with regard to the issue of full-day kindergarten, both in Academic Standards and at the board table. And on another topic, this is to the chairs of the various committees. If a presenter, and Jerry, you said PFM is coming to the next meeting. If a presenter's coming to a meeting, I would appreciate that presenter emailing to the school board members in advance, any documents that they are gonna bring to the committee, so we have a chance to review them in advance. And I think that would help us be more informed at that committee meeting.
I will agree with one modification, which is particularly in the case of the Finance Committee. Mr. Reinhardt is the coordinator for that in terms of getting PFM to come in, so I would expect him to have the opportunity to review the document, and then for Mr. Reinhardt to distribute anything in advance, and I would imagine if Doug had a specialist come in as well.
And I would say not necessarily, since we're starting to make use of PowerPoint more and more, I think the more we have a chance to see it, it will streamline the meeting so we can ask the questions rather than taking the time to go in such detail through those PowerPoints. If it's possible to get a pre-read, you know, 24 hours out, that'd be great. I know sometimes it's not always possible, but that'd be helpful. Any other board comment?
Just, I'd like to welcome Joan Helyer from The Courier. Chris English is not here anymore. Joan, are you with us?
Hi, Joan.
Hello. Good to have you.
Joan was the reporter. Joan, you, when did, no, she's the story, not just the reporter. When did, when were you, you were the reporter for us up until what, 2005? 2005, is it? She's leaving.
Any other board comment?
I have one, one comment to make. I had the opportunity to attend PTO meetings this week and last, or I should say, last week, and then this week at Salfine Stone, Newtown Middle School, and also Council Rock North. And, you know, I think that Mr. Harland, Mr. Long, Ms. McCarthy did a tremendous job with the parents that were there. The reason I mention it, though, is because I take the opportunity to answer questions but provide an update around what's going on with the school board. And two things really came back out of those committees. One is they're really appreciative of the propane buses, to see those out there, and they thought that was a great initiative, something that they're proud of as a community. But more importantly, to reinforce this technology committee. I got multiple questions and a lot of energy around this committee and around the things that it can do, and a lot of questions, which you guys have received emails on, around when's it starting, how are we gonna pick it, when's it up and running? So there's a great interest, there's a lot of great ideas, there's a lot of expertise in the community to leverage, and I just wanted to share that, having heard it through the week from the community. Any other board comments?
All right, meeting adjourned.